Alright, it seems like everyone's getting quiet, I don't know. That must be me in the start. My name is Dan Ernst Muscina, I'm a city commissioner of the City of Muskegon. And I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. This is kind of a unique meeting. I'm calling the Community Relations Committee to order. That is a committee of the city commission. And generally, the Community Relations Committee deals with appointing people from the town bank to the various boards and committees that the city has. But it also serves as a way for the city to reach out to the community. So, at the start of the year, it was suggested that we hold some of these meetings out in the community, at least a couple times a year. And we thought that that was a good idea, so we have kind of started to pursue that. And then it kind of coincided with an initiative of the City Action Plan, which was presented by the city manager to the commission in March or so, and was adopted as the action plan for the city for this year. I think in May, or in April, May. Anyway, it has been adopted. And now we'd like to share the plan with citizens, and also to get input into it, as to what people think is important. And specifically, some of the actions in the plan might, you'd like to give input on, and we'd like to see what your thoughts are. So that's the main purpose for holding the meeting tonight. I think we're going to be holding another one, coming up in a couple weeks here, so we'll be announcing that soon. But we wanted to come out to the, we thought this was a great spot on the east side of town to convene a meeting and get people's input. So I think the format for the evening is Frank Peterson, the city manager, is going to give a brief presentation of the, summarizing the action plan, and some of the issues that we're hoping for input on. And then we will basically let citizens give their ideas about the plan, and give us some input into some of the concrete things that we might be proposing or implementing as part of the plan. Is there anything that I am forgetting? Maybe we could, I don't know, is it appropriate for everyone to introduce themselves? Yeah, there's not like too many people here, so I don't know, we could probably just say our names and where we live, and where do we start over here?
Sure. My name is Larry Spataro. I currently serve as your vice mayor, and I live over on Sixth Street, just south of Southern Avenue.
I'm Ken Johnson, I'm large commissioner, live over on Montgomery, in the NIMs neighborhood. Grew up in the east side of Muskegon though, over on Kelvin Avenue.
My name is Willie German Jr., city commissioner, live on Stamford Street. Actually grew up in this neighborhood, and over this ward here, I'm just presenting here, as city commissioner.
Hi, I'm Steve Goran, I'm your mayor. I live on Palmer Avenue, up in the NIMs neighborhood. Grew up in the Marshfield neighborhood, behind Moon School. A number of us here, lifelong kid, and it's a pleasure to be out here tonight.
Hi, I'm Frank Peterson, city manager. I'm the new one to town, I guess, here, sitting up at the table. Hope to get ready to move into a nice house in the Nelson neighborhood, Battle Creek area.
I introduce myself, Dan Ernst Muscina, I live at 154 Campus, right near the big red stadium.
I'm Eric Hood, I live on Creston, 1410 Creston. I'm over Ward 1, and I grew up in the city of Muskegon, not too far from here on McLaughlin Street.
My name is Byron Turquist, I'm commissioner from Ward 4, which is on the west end of town. My wife and I, we retired, came over here in 2002, and we just feel it's a fantastic place to be. We love it over here. Many times, we think that people who were born and raised in the city don't appreciate what we have here, and it's a great place to live.
Alright, well, I was conferring with Frank, we thought it might be a little bit too long for everyone to introduce themselves, so, but I think it was good for the commissioners to do that. I think if you do, when you do get a chance to make a comment, you can say where you live and things like that, so we'll probably handle it that way. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Frank, and he's going to give a presentation about the strategic plan.
Okay, very good. I think Ann's going to dim the lights back here, so everybody can see the screen better. And also, Ann's holding back there in the back of the room copies of our action plan, right? Full copies, and we get those passed out, because I'm not going to be able to hit on everything, there's a lot of pages and a lot of information in there. You guys didn't come to sit here for an hour, you can't sit here for like, hope to like 10 minutes of a week's meeting. But, the commission worked pretty hard over the last probably six months to develop a set of goals for the community to follow over, you know, over the next year and also over the next three years, so two different sections. The action plans that are being handed out to you guys are the, are how we're proposing to meet the goals that the commission hands out. A lot of what we're going to talk about in there, it's about moving the community forward. How do we make Muskegon the best Muskegon that it can be? How do we deal with the blight issues that we have? How do we deal with any sort of crime issues that we have? How do we make the community more livable and more enjoyable for the people that live here, and potentially for the people that could live here soon? With the idea of making sure Muskegon's viable and sustainable for many years to come. So there's a lot of information in there about how we plan to move some of the projects forward that are kind of stalled in our downtown, and throughout the city. How we try not cleaning up some blight, and addressing some blight. How would we like to engage the community more? And this is one of the ways that we talked about engaging the community, was getting out more, and seeing you guys in different places other than City Hall. How we're going to deal with the city's financial situation. As you guys probably all know, communities throughout Michigan have struggled lately, especially the last five to six years. But urban communities specifically have really struggled. Residents have really seen a decline in quality of life, a decline in city services, a decline in property values. And just overall, the urban communities of Michigan have struggled greatly. Especially on the east sides of the state, when you see all the communities that are receivership, or under state control, are having major reductions in services and public safety and things like that. And Muskegon isn't a whole lot different, that we are an urban community in Michigan, and we face some of those very same struggles. And so that was a key component of the action plan. And also, there's a large component of the action plan, which is, what do we do about our road system here in Muskegon? I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that we have some issues statewide with the quality of our streets, especially with the following winter like we just had, where potholes are just everywhere, and a lot of roads are almost more gravel than they are asphalt. And especially in our neighborhoods, you know, we've done a reasonably well job of accessing funds to take care of our main trunk lines, but when you get back in our neighborhoods, the roads just look like they, like they need a major investment. And so, so, what you'll hear us to talk about a lot, and these plans are, are generally make the community better, and trying to get the discussion going about, do we want to make it better? How do we want to make it better? And what sort of investment are we willing to make, to make it better? And then a second discussion specifically about roads, coming to the understanding that, hey, nobody else is going to fix them for us if we don't fix them ourselves. And we have to decide, are we willing to fix them ourselves, or are we willing to essentially let them be anything deteriorating? So I put a couple of notes up here on the first slide, and just some things to get you guys thinking while we go through these. And that are, you know, what do you want from your community? What do you expect from Muskegon when you live here? You know, you're elected to appoint officials, they're here to provide you services, they're here to provide those in the most effective and efficient way possible, but to do this, they do need your input. They need to know what things are important to you, and they need to know what you're willing to invest to get the things that you want, and the things that you desire to make this community livable for you. So, help us, you know, I guess makes Muskegon the very best Muskegon that it can be, is what we're asking. One thing that always comes up, and this was a key thing when we were going through this, is, is how does Muskegon compare from a tax standpoint? Because one of the things that everybody's, that everybody's going to be concerned with, including these people up here, and myself, and that is, to make Muskegon what it needs to be, and what we want it to be, will cost us so much. The question is, how do we compare with other communities? And at the level of, at the level of cost that we, that we all agree to, is it sustainable for, for the community as a whole? So I always wanted to point out that we did a cost analysis from a municipal tax standpoint, and, and I'd like to point out that, actually, in Muskegon, when you compare all the cities in Muskegon and Ottawa County, on a per household basis, the dollars that go from the household into the local municipality, there's only one community on a property tax standpoint that, that people pay less per household than Muskegon, and that's the city of Muskegon Heights. When you factor in our income tax, there's only two cities that pay less than us into our community on a per household basis. It's Muskegon Heights and Roosevelt Park. So when you look up here on this, you see Muskegon, the amount of dollars that our, that our households put into our community to make it what we want it to be, are somewhere in the neighborhood of just under $400 a year. And then you look at some of the other communities, like Whitehall, Hudsonville, North Shore, and Cooperville, that kind of make up our area, all the other north of Muskegon and Grand Haven. Some of these put in north of $1,000 per household, per year, in the community. And then those transferred into quality of life. But at the same time, we do have to recognize that, that the affordability of Muskegon can't necessarily be the same as it is in Grand Haven, in north Muskegon, but we do need to under, we do need to come to a, I guess, a community understanding of what spot fits us best for, for the things that we want to do, and for the things that we want our community to be. But, when you don't invest in your community, these are the kinds of things that you get. You gotta try to recognize these sorts of things. You might have one right in front of your house as you're traveling. Other things you might recognize are, the inability to keep up with blight. Some of these are old, none of those still exist in the city. But, at some point, we need to ask ourselves, right? Do we simply want to be the cheapest, most affordable city in west Michigan? Or do we want to be the very best value of the community in west Michigan? And, and here's the thing that, that I think I don't have to explain to you guys, I don't have to explain to you guys, is, we have some assets in this community, and I'm going to show you some pictures of them, that put us in a position that not a single urban community in Michigan has. And that is, the water and the natural resource that we have, that we can leverage to make our community better. So when you look at South Lake, Lake Michigan, and Muskegon Lake, our downtown, which, which is, which is starting to boom right now, which has a lot of excitement about it, and which is almost a blank canvas in a lot of ways, it's a beautiful downtown. We have these kinds of resources that, that they don't have in Detroit, they don't have them, they can't manufacture them. We have something that these places can't manufacture, and the question is, is there a way for us to maximize those, so we get more people into our community that'll help us sustain our, our municipal operations? But also so that you guys have the things that make you happy as a resident in a community. So, do we have something special to offer? And I think we do, you know, we can be a special place here in Muskegon, in a lot of ways we are, but we can be even a more special place, but we can do it at a very, very reasonable value for our residents. And that's something that, that I'm not sure that they can say in certain places in Ottawa County, or down in St. Joe. You know, the value that we have on a per dollar basis, from a property cost standpoint to get in, and then, we need to compare that to the resources that we have available with our museums in the downtown, and our museums on the lake shore, and, and our lake shore itself, and all the things that we have to offer, we have quite a bit of cool, unique, quality things to offer our community. But, how do we grow what I would call healthy and sustainable Muskegon? How do we use those assets? How do we maximize those assets? So everyone here has access to them, and so our, our values can grow in our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods can be more desirable. People want to bring jobs here because they recognize that the executives will have a cool city to live in, that has, that has lots of amenities and high quality of life. Well, I would say that we need a strong root system. And there are many qualities that make a community desirable and prosperous, but if those qualities are missing, or if they're substandard, then the community will quickly begin to struggle, and you see on here. We'll have trouble collecting new residents, new businesses, the new visitors. We'll fail to attract new investments, and we won't be able to move our community forward. You know, things like adequate infrastructure, good product safety, attractions, park, desirable neighborhoods, a sense of place in the community, a unique identity, affordability, and then a return on investment, so that when you do buy a house, whether you're buying it as an investment as a landlord, or as an investment as a homeowner, that there is going to be a return on investment. Because we're making investments every day, make sure that property will be worth more in 2015 than it is in 2014, and more in 2016 than it is in 2015. What do you drive? So, you know, and if I even notice here, you know, what I'm trying to show you is a tree with a root system, and what the drive is, is what we give it every day, what we water it every day. And if we take that water away for, for six months, it doesn't matter if we bring it back after six months, we've done quite a bit of damage to that tree, and we might not be able to save it. But the drive is, is, is our community doing the things we need to do every day, every year, constant investments in our community to make sure that we don't get to a point where we can't return from. So, kicking the can down the road because we don't want to make a tough decision. Not paying for something because we don't want to pay for it today, might cost more for us to pay for it tomorrow. And that, and you'll see when I, when I talk about the roads on here, you know, if we had been making a sustainable investment in these roads, say, since, since the mid 90s, or even the mid 2000s, we wouldn't have a $72 million road investment in need right now with the city of Muskegon. But if we push these things down the road too long, if we don't water the, the city, if we don't, if we don't feed the city, if we don't invest in the city for too long, we'll get to a point where it's going to be difficult to even make those investments, because, because we'll need so much, that the little investment that we're able to make at the time, it won't, it won't make a difference. So we need a solid core, you know, but I put on here, you know, the core of our efforts to improve our community must be a unified message from our residents and related action to demonstrate a desire, right? A desire to improve the community, a commitment to improvement. Things like, like blight payment, things like making infrastructure investments, creating a sense of place, adding to our community amenity list where appropriate, supporting our local businesses, supporting our educational system, you know, and investing in our image, because, you know, our image is very, very important in attracting people here, making people comfortable here to visit, and making people happy here to live. So, so phase, I thought, I kind of broke this into two phases like I talked about. One is the general stuff about the city, and what we do to make the city better for all of us. And, and phase one, and I want to talk about, is creating the best value of the community that we can be. And, and you saw the, the slide I had, it was the second slide in, where it showed that we were one of the, the cheapest places to live in west Michigan, you know, we have all these great 90s. And, and I think we need to wrestle with that question, is do we want to constantly focus on being the cheapest place to live? Or do we want to be the very best value of a place to live? The very best, best value of a place to invest, place to work, the place to visit? And that's a question that, that this community's work on answering, and, and our residents need to work on answering, they need to, they need to tell us what, what they want, so we can make, so we can make the investments where we, where we need to make them. But in my opinion, I put it right on here, I think that this community deserves to be the best that it, that it can be, you know. But first, if we want to be the best, we need to stabilize our, we need to make those investments that I was talking about. We need to invest in our public safety, we need to invest in blight payment, we need to invest in quality of life amenities, and we need to work on making the community as desirable as possible. Not necessarily as cheap as possible, and that doesn't mean that it has to be a very expensive place to live, it just means we have to find the right level of, of investment in our community that we're comfortable with, and that also moves our community forward. But the other thing is, we need to invest in our infrastructure, we need to improve our infrastructure. Roads, curbs, sidewalks are crumbling in our community, and you know what? They're valuable, quality of life resources, but they're also important in making our community more desirable for investment. You know, roadways are needed for economic development, they're needed for personal travel, they're needed for neighborhood stabilization, and they're needed for community purification. You know, when you go down, down, down the street that's freshly paved and well-maintained by the city, man, it has a different feel to it. The houses still, even if the houses are struggling a little bit, they, they look a little bit nicer. So the goal is, if you make these investments in our public infrastructure, people will be more willing to make the investments in their community, in their, in their houses. And at the same time, where we focusing on things like blight payment, and, and improving our image and things like that, so that we're all working together to make the community better. I kind of, I danced around this number a moment ago, our neighborhood streets need more than $72 million in investments. There's probably not a person in here that lives on a street that was paved in the last five years, you know, lives on a street, I'm not saying travels, I don't want to be doing case in streets, but the neighborhood streets, the ones that are in our neighborhoods, the ones that you live on, the ones that you expect your kids to ride their bikes on, and maybe roller, roller skate, or roller blade on, the play, the, the being, those are the ones that are, that are in the worst shape in our community. Those are the ones that have the smallest amount of available revenue from year to year, but they also have the most road miles to do. So what's that translated to? Two and a half million dollars of new investment needed over a 20-year period, just to make up for what we've missed over the last 20 years. Not to make them all perfect, but to start pulling them all up to what we call a fair standard. But what, but what does two and a half million dollars annually look like in our city? Well, we have a residential value, a mean residential value of $52,000 in the city. Now, some people's houses are worth more, and some are worth, worth less. But for the average Muskegonian to fix those roads, if we wanted to go at it and do that full amount of money, and I'm not saying that's what we want to do, or not want to do, but this one, it would cost. It would cost a person in the average household about $125 a year, $10.50 a month. If you want to look at a more, at a little higher value of a home, a $100,000 home, then it's about $250 per year, or $21 a month. And then if you want to look at some of our more modest homes in the community, about $30,000 value, probably $75 a year, and $6.25 per household, per month. I thought it was important to show you guys this, and also make it clear that the commission had it decided, they might have given it from you guys, but they did ask me to show it, to share with you what it costs to do, what the city staff, full recommendation for full, I guess, investment in the streets would cost, so we just shared that with you guys. But that doesn't mean that this is something that the city's committed to, just means something that we're interested in, and making sure you understand what it would look like if we kind of decided we were going to go for it all. But, but results, you know, so say we're successfully able, able to do the thing we talked about in phase one, make the community more enjoyable, make it more desirable, increase the quality of life, just make it the very, very, very best value in west Michigan, and at the same time, make the needed investments in our streets so that we can accommodate business developments, we can accommodate new residents, so we can accommodate the things that we need to accommodate to move forward in the 20th century. But what are we going to end up with? Better streets, better sidewalks, better lighting, safer, more attractive neighborhoods, higher and more sustainable home values, more local amenities, more job opportunities, more residents, more economic diversity citywide, a better image, more visitors, and by value and overall better quality of life. But, but here's, here's where we get into, I guess, asking you guys what you think, you know? Is this the kind of thing that you want from Muskegon? And if it is, what are we willing to do as a group, as a community, to accomplish it? Are we willing to invest our time and resources to get to that point? At what cost is it acceptable or unacceptable? You know, are we willing to make that investment in our community? And if we're not, you know, what's the alternative? Let's talk about what alternatives there are, to make the, the city the very best it can be, if we're not interested in, in, in doing it the way that city staff has proposed. Just want to give you guys a couple more slides with some information on it. The millage rates on here, if you see, these are, millage rates, everybody understands what those are, if you pay taxes, essentially, the value of your house times the millage rate, equals how many taxes that you pay. But here's the city of Muskegon, these are all, all communities in Muskegon County and Ottawa County, all the cities. So here's our seats around here, we're kind of middle of the road right now, at this When you look at mean residential value, this, this is the thing that kind of gets us, is that, that, this is Muskegon Heights, and this is Muskegon. So we need to have, ask our residents to contribute more, more millage dollars per household, just to equal the same kind of dollars that a smaller millage brings in in all these other communities. When you look down at Graff Fairies, where you can see a mean value of over $300, over $150,000, sorry, it's a little quickly over here, $150,000. And then in Muskegon Heights, or in Muskegon where they're at, $50,000 or $35,000. You can understand why a community might need to have a higher millage rate than another community, to make those same investments. And at the same time, our community is struggling with, with lost population, and lost revenues from the state, and, and lost income tax revenue at the same time. And it makes it hard to provide the services that, that our residents want and deserve. I did want to put this one on here, because a lot of people will bring up, hey, we have this income tax. This income tax, it should be offsetting a lot of this property taxes. And let me tell you a story about income taxes. If you look at all these communities on here, the communities that have income taxes, we're all kind of in the same boat right now. We're all older, industrial, well-urbanized communities, and we needed this income tax years ago, and it was brought in when we had all these industrial jobs. Well, if we have millage rates, here of all the communities in Michigan that do have income taxes, of all the communities that have income taxes, here's Muskegon right up here at the top. We have, other than Grand Rapids, we do have the lowest millage rate. So, all these communities that have income taxes, they have it for a reason, because they have lower property values, and they're high, and they're urbanized areas, so they rely on the income taxes. And at the same time, the reason, you know, the reason that they have income taxes, is because a lot of these communities, they, they grew as an urban core, like Muskegon was an urban core, and over years, the jobs by the state and the community, but the residents kind of spread out to suburbs, the township, things like this. And this was a way to help make sure that the people that made, that made commitments for us, that voted to fix roads, and to build things, and to build amenities, are, still have a way to contribute to our community, even though they're not living here anymore, because of the work in here. So, anyway, this is my last slide, and then, and then we'll fully take some comments for you guys. But, hey, urban communities in Michigan are struggling. Constantly, our urban communities in particular are cutting the quality of life, they're lowering the standard of living, and they're lowering the expectation of the residents, and a lot of them are even heading into receivership. And, and at some point, these great urban communities that built Michigan, somebody needs to stand up for them, including Muskegon, and say, hey, our residents deserve better. It doesn't matter that they're lower income, or median income, or higher income, they deserve better than, than what's happening to urban communities and urban residents throughout Michigan. But, who's going to step up to do that? Who's going to take the lead and say, hey, let's stop cut, cut, cutting so we can be the cheapest place to live? Let's start investing, investing, investing so we can be the best value of all urban areas and communities. And so, I put this little note on here, it says, the speed, you can lead the way. You know, we're, like I said, we're different than a lot of those other urban areas. We have these assets that will make us desirable to hire income people too, where we can live together, but we can also leverage the assets of some of our higher, new, maybe new residents, new higher income residents, and help fund the, the programming and quality of life stuff throughout the community. A lot of, a lot of places like Panya and Saginaw, they don't have those resources to rely on, but if, if we want to attract those people to our community, we can't focus on being the cheapest, we have to focus on being the best value. That's seriously it. So, I thank you guys for the time, I talk fast, I'm passionate about, about what I believe. I think Muskegon is an awesome place, and, and if we make the right investments in it at the right times, this place is just, it's going to boom like, like it never had, as it boomed before, before I was alive. But, but I was in the 80s, so maybe it was booming back then, it's bigger. But, we're, we're ripe for some major investment, and I think we have a group of people up here that are willing to follow, follow your lead and, and make those investments, but we want to hear from you. Ann's got some surveys to pass out, if you're not comfortable getting up here and telling us what you think, fill out the survey and give us some feedback. But if you're comfortable, if you have something to say, if you have a comment to make, if you want to tell me to get the heck out of here with this plan, they call up and tell me, because we got to hear from you. We don't want to go in a direction that's different from what the residents want.
That sounds good, yep. Thank you Frank.
Yes, Ann will get the lights, or actually, I'll need this one to get them.
We can all see each other again. So, thank you Frank. And, so that was kind of the, some of the issues that the city is dealing with, in terms of where we need to go with our, our strategic plan, and some of the most pressing issues, in terms of what we need to fix. So we're interested in your comments. We really would encourage you to fill out the survey, because that is going to give us something to get everyone's opinion in the same way. But we would welcome your comments now, if you feel comfortable to come to the front. If you could just say your name, and also, an address. Also, I think we are going to limit the comments to three minutes per person, there's a lot of people here, and, in order for everyone to have a chance to share, I think that that would be the best thing. We're not going to be right exactly then, but we'll be, you know, letting you know that the time is growing short, so if you could help us with that. Of course, all of us are always open to comment, you know, after the meeting, or by email, or by phone. I think all of our contact information is on the city website, so, this is not the end-all, be-all, and if you don't feel comfortable sharing your opinions here, you can do that in many other ways, but this is one way to get some input, so feel free to come up and let us know what you're thinking. let us know what you're thinking.
Oh, no, it's just for TV.
Well, I don't care, I'm from the car. I live on the car with a lakeside by, basically, my city and all that. Basically, I want to ask some people here, who's here looking paycheck to paycheck basically? In those groups? And, yeah, you can either bear it. So who here is going to give more money out of their pockets when they already have so many projects here? There's so many projects they can do with the money they have, and yet now they're asking for a road village? I mean, beach warning system, we had that in Pine, it never worked. If you look at it, it's waiting me out there, just don't go out, especially with Westwood. Sorry, the pipe ward, that kind of makes me mad. A lot of these things, taxation accountability, it means that certain people are going to get a tax relief while the rest of us are going to have to pay a little bit more just to shore up that gap. Well, how can we trust you guys, you that have been mismanaging our funds for years, with more taxes, especially when you just passed another millage like it was a couple weeks ago or maybe a couple months ago, and then another millage last year, and then another bond before that? Now we have money for all these programs? That's basically, we're going to infrastructure first before you worry about convention center. That's all I have to say. Get a quarter of this.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, this is the city of Muskegon. We haven't passed the millage in years. Last millage increase was, I don't know. Well, but when you talk about you people mismanage your money, I do take exception to that because we're not anywhere near needing a receivership. We are shorting our investments in public infrastructure because there's just not the money that there used to be. And I think it's, we should have that open discussion about that, but we should have the facts on the table. In the early nineties, my first action as getting involved in local politics is I was on the committee called the United Citizens for Muskegon Two Thousand that worked past that income tax. And we asked that city commission at that time to pass a resolution locking in the promises that were going to be met if that income tax was passed. And those promises were for a five-year period, which means that was from two thousand, or I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-eight. At the time, we had sixty-one police officers, and one of the promises with the income tax was to increase that by ten. The chief is here, we currently have, how many police officers?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. So that was a promise that was made and a promise was kept. Your tax dollars are going where you thought they were going to go. We promised to increase the number of firefighters by two. Again, that was a promise that was made and a promise that was kept. We promised to invest in new fire equipment. We just bought a new fire truck out of the fund that's generated from the income tax money and on down the line. Anybody can look for that information and see in our budget where we've been responsible with your dollars. Now, what's happened since then? Well, one thing that's happened is we used to get money from the federal government called community development block grant funds. And fifteen years ago, that was still almost three million dollars a year. Our treasurer's here, that's now down under eight-hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, or thereabouts. That's a lot of money that's no longer coming into this community to invest in things like infrastructure. We have had the state balance their books on your backs in your community. The state promised the cities back in nineteen sixty-two, when they passed that sixty-two constitution, that if we gave up our right to collect the local sales tax, that the local cities would be reimbursed for that lost revenue with revenue sharing. That's not a bonus. They took something away and said, we'll hold you harmless with revenue sharing. Despite that promise, we've been shorted, and this is, you can look in the Michigan Municipal League study to show what it works out per community around the state, but it's a million four less a year that we've been getting for the last decade. Let me repeat that. The state took away one-point-four million dollars a year of revenue that used to come back from your sales tax money back to your community. We know what the state's been doing. I can't speak for them, but I can say what we've gotten here. So what's the net result? We actually have less revenue coming in today than we did a decade ago, not because of what you guys are doing here in town, but because those other sources aren't there anymore. And then when you see what happened with housing and people's assessments going down, we've seen a reduction in our property tax revenues on top of it. So the fact that we're, our budgets are balanced, the fact that our legacy costs like pension and healthcare are funded, and we're not in a crisis mode like some of our sister communities around the state, we have been very frugal and very responsible with your money. So the issue is, do we continue to cut like we've been so that we can continue that, or can we invest in our community so that we can be better, so that we have streets that are drivable, so that we have a community in which we can be proud of, where we can bring people and show them this is a great place to invest, to create jobs here, because Lord knows, we need more jobs in this community. So I do take exception to the remark that was made. This may not be the best way to go, but let's be honest about how we got here, and let's talk about where we are and where we need to go. So I know that's a little longer, but I just, I felt that needed to be said, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have another gentleman who'd like to make a comment.
Hi, my name is James Olaford, I'm a crackhead, next sir.
You're writing all these down?
Yeah. The non-crackhead, the crackhead was assessing tax. Were you doing the crackhead about twelve years ago? Paid approximately fifty dollars just per month. So did others on the crack. I paid this for about ten years. Now you want to raise my property tax to pay for the rest of the streets in the city. I believe this unfair, believe others that live on their streets, their own home. I should be assessing the same man. I also have to do my sidewalk. They should be also assessing the same man. I shouldn't have to pay for the rest of the city's sidewalks, roads. Secondly, the beach field, I do them on the waves. Yeah, the waves, I go in, I'm having beach, ice surfer, and towers just, this is crazy to me, but I don't know why we put up video screens on the bathhouse, a wind key, a riptide, and lake conditions. The bathhouse has power already. It's a central location, green and yellow flashers, and red flasher on the bathhouse. If it's not tall enough, it's going to pull up in the air. Solar, black traffic signs at each entry to the beach, and we got two entries to that beach. The red, the yellow, and the green also can report beach conditions in different languages. Educational DVD at the schools and lab. On the last week of the school, each class, about riptides, winds, temperature, and flotation devices. Post on the beach with some kind of flotation device on them or a way to get to a person. A sign with people's names that are brown as a reminder of the dangers of the lake. And there's plenty of power around the beach water flotation plant, the bathhouse is pretty apart, so you won't have to run new left. And does heaven towers really say left, or does education say left?
Thank you. I don't know.
About how this?
Sure. Should we say anything about how we used to assess and now we don't? Should we say anything about how we do special assessments?
You can say that, it's an option.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
Hi, guys. My name is Anne. I'm in a precinct in North Creek, that's Byrd Street, my summer celebration. I'm a landlord here in Muskegon. And when you talk about blight, I fought against this when it came through. We talk about blight on these new state-built city inspectors. I haven't seen any blight comment. All I've seen is extra fees, whereas my tenants allow their grass to grow a little long, and I get a fee. Somebody drives down the street, throws out a tire, lands in my yard, I get charged. There's only one warning that goes out, and then every time after that, I just get a bill in the mail. And it's a unreasonable bill. Two hundred dollars to mow the yard? Come on. There's a lot of waste going on at the city level. The proposed increase of taxes, we currently own four key houses in the city of Muskegon Heights, and every single one of them is up for sale. The city of Muskegon Heights has made it untenable for us to make a profit by providing reasonable rates of homes and not being taxed or harassed by city inspectors. You know, I'll give you an example. In the city of Muskegon Heights, and I know this is not where we're dealing with here, I'm forced to put three smoking factors in bedrocks. Two on the inside of the bedroom at different heights and one on the outside of it. That kind of waste and fraud is rampant, and I see it creeping into the city of Muskegon. The city of Muskegon still tries to deal with this on a fair basis, but it's falling through gaps, you know, adding six more. I don't know if that didn't unaccountable to tenants and landlords and homeowners in the city of Muskegon inspectors who are supposed to come at urban life, you know? And we all know that there's a problem with houses that aren't being maintained. But what they're really doing is raising revenue off the backs of working people. You know, out of the forty tenants that we have, we make twenty thousand dollars profit at the end of the year after paying taxes. As a self-employed person, I pay more than fifty percent of my tax, my money towards taxes, you know, whether state, local, federal, or regulations or compliance with these codes and ordinances. It's to the point where I'm ready to move, I'm ready to leave. The city is driving people out, we're trying to put reasonable housing, you know, quality housing at a reasonable rate in front of people that they can afford. So I'm really against the tax increases and this state-built, you know, organization, these jackaluded thugs that are coming around, forcing me, trying to use authority against me. It's untenable. I'm to the point where I will sell every single house I own in this city and move out. It's not worth it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Sure. You touched on an area about, you know, taking care of property and the lawn cutting, and I'm aware of that going on, and I'd just like to get on my soapbox a little bit about being good neighbors. Whether you're renting or owning a piece of property, you should feel an obligation to the people on either side of you who live up and down the street to take care of that property. And if that doesn't happen, let us know. We're not asking you to go and be the reporter of this, but any one of us will take that complaint, and I'd like to share one that happened over on Lincoln Avenue. The people had a garage sale that lasted for months. They had clothes hanging from tree to tree with clothes out there and stuff on, and there was no garage sale going on, but it just stayed that way. Well, one of our employees from the city in the planning division wrote a letter, and it was cleaned up the next day. Those are the little things that can make our neighborhoods look better. Please, respect your neighbors and take care of where you're living. And that doesn't, you know, that, it might cost a few dollars, but it's not like a millage. But the better we look in all of our neighborhoods, the better off we're all going to be.
I agree, but what I'm talking about is rental homes. So these are homes where people move in and they live there. The fees, the fines, all this community activism, that's great, but that doesn't fall on the person living in the home. That falls on the locals.
I understand that, sir. I can't imagine someone living in a home, whether he's a renter or not a renter, not wanting to at least keep his yard and his home, he's living in it, it's his home, clean and neat. And I know it's a huge problem to get people to do that, but we need to do it. We need to be good neighbors to each other and go from there.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I think there's something in history to be done, Mark. I think that I heard this before.
Can I hear?
I think there's to support the increasing of the streets and houses. But also, I support the generality of the investment. Though I have some specific ideas and, you know, for example, library and aisle are those, the lack of oral history being done in the community of Muskegon. The memories are very valuable, they're also very cultural, and cultural work is definitely going to be good. If that asset was expanded. But if you, if you don't know what your history is, but if you do know, you'll enjoy it in the future. Even not with state finances, but maybe coordination. Right now, there is no libraries, museums, I don't know, that's not our belief. There's no oral history of the congregation in Michigan, or oral history of the community in the United States, celebrating the, you, those Christian people right now, what their life was in Muskegon, in the earth, and how it changed, and what they do for family boardings, or, you know, the burning fire that you left them. I think something should be done, may not be the opposite of the violence that they have, desire to do this, and they're trying. Second observation, the beauty of this house that I am, the natural gardens that they gave them, and so, they're, I'm sure it's getting out, was really just like, what I gave them back for, for spending more hours, for, for, for more hours, and, 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 and , you know, I think, you all are part of the, as you all get the touch of these, it's all time, you can report, that you're all for that.
Thank you.
So that's your problem?
Yeah, go ahead. Sir, if I could add one thing, and that is that I think infrastructure is very important, obviously, but we are interested in quality of life, and the things that you talked about are, you know, especially for some of our residents would be important quality of life things to offer. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Kirsten Malski, sixteen, sixty-eight each street, and I'm concerned with the beach warning system, obviously. If you could just clarify here, it says that you identified a vendor and this step is near completion. Have you decided to go ahead with the towers?
I think what we've decided was to go ahead and nail down the cost and nail down what the system would look like, but no, the commission hasn't formally went and said we are going to do this.
Okay, I didn't think so, but it's kind of, it goes here. But my comments are that we've had some good suggestions on alternatives, and we've had lifeguards, didn't prevent drownings. We had a blight system that would prevent drownings. We had nothing this past year did not prevent drownings. We've seen people go in and out of the water, you know, rescuing folks.
Two years ago, it happened on a sunny day, would not have been a yellow day, definitely would not have been a red day. That person was not near the South Brightwater. That person was not near the South Breakwater. That person was in an area where we have never had lifeguards before. That person just got exhausted, couldn't get in, and somebody had to go rescue him. There would have been no warning for that person. So I think we need to look at alternatives. People don't pay attention, unfortunately, we don't. We love to go out in the surf. People come from the east side of the state, they don't know what the surf is like out here. People come from in-town, they don't know what the surf is like out here. Okay, they're gonna come, they're gonna see waves, they're gonna wanna get in the waves. Ninety percent of the folks don't pay attention to that. I think people pay attention to stories or something that has happened. And I think the idea of a sign saying, "Don't swim near the breakwater, people have drowned here." I mean, that is playing to a person's emotions instead of facts. And people tend to go with their emotions more than they're gonna go with somebody just saying, "Don't do this." And I would just like to say that I would be happy to help with any of these, you know, in a committee or whatever. But I think we need to do our due diligence and look at all of the options that are available and what's best for the people that come out to the beach. Thanks.
Thank you. And I know that's a topic that will continue to bring discussion. So thank you for your input and I'm sure we'll be talking about that more.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Sherman and I wanted to reiterate what this lady just said. I am concerned certainly about the safety down there at the beach. But I don't feel if there's like a warning system, if they hear voices warning people about the swimming conditions, is that something that's being considered? Because I think that, number one, I think the expense, what I saw in the paper anyway, is really above and beyond what we need. And the other thing is there are people who are gonna just tune that out. They're not gonna listen to it. I also wonder if the people living on Beach Street are gonna hear this and if it's going to be going on, if not twenty-four hours a day, a lot during the day, that would be, I think, very intrusive and bothersome. And I also think there would be people who would say, if that was in place, "I don't wanna swim here, this is too, you know, big brother kind of a feel here. I'm gonna go further down the beach where I can't hear it. I'm gonna go to North Muskegon where they don't have it." I do think a flag system is good. I think working with education systems, talking about rip currents and, you know, high waves and the dangers. We can talk about it, we can instill this in our kids and we also have to just take responsibility for our own lives and for parents with their kids, watch them like a hawk. Because the thing is, even if it is calm, it still is dangerous, just like a kid's waiting pool in the backyard, kids drowning in that. So we just have to be very vigilant, very aware, and if it looks dangerous, just don't go in. That's what I'm thinking. I don't think we need this loudspeaker program going on on the beach. I think it's going to be detrimental to the whole beach experience. So I would be against it. Flag system is good too and just reiterating that. Also maybe public service announcements on radio and TV, just to keep people aware of what those mean and to heed them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood has a comment?
I agree with a lot of things that you're saying about the beach warning system and people go out anyways in unsafe conditions and that things happen during good conditions. But I think we also have to think of the people that do pay attention to the warning system, that don't go in when they see that red flag up, that didn't go in when the red flags were up, that didn't go in when they didn't see lifeguards. We can't count those people out because I'm quite sure it was a lot of people, including myself, that paid attention to those signs, paid attention to the flags. And so I just believe that warning system is important because it is affecting a lot more people than we're giving credit to. Because we don't know how many people that saw the warning sign, saw the red lights and didn't go into the water. That's all.
And Cassie Menard?
If I could just add on the beach warning system, we're still in the infancy stage of that, studying it. And it's our hopes that there will be funding available to do that because it covers a broad specter of people and it's not coming as part of the five mil that we're talking about or taxes. We're hoping and keeping our fingers crossed that we can get someone to help us install that for the safety of all people. And you'll never stop all the drownings down there, it will happen.
People make their own choices?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Cassie, this is my husband Jeremy and we live in Grand Haven. We are thinking about moving to Muskegon and trying to help. And we have already within the community, we have lots of people that we already know in the community. And we've been doing Project Green Awakening Community, which is a nonprofit organization. We provide clothes and food as much as we possibly can. I've been trying to work with the governor's office to come take a walk through West Michigan and focus on needs. And it's been unsuccessful, in all honesty. I have a letter that I think each one of you already have it too, but it's where our focus should be. And it's, "Dear Michigan citizens, to the educated, compassionate and loving community here in Michigan, may please have a moment of your time. Please pay attention to the simple science of our health and safety. Science has proven in an acidic atmosphere or environment, diseases grow freely and rapidly versus an alkaline environment in which disease does not grow at all. And if it does, the environment is healthy enough to heal itself. Is our environment acidic or alkaline and what is needed to provide a true solution to our health and safety? Life itself depends on knowing these answers. What toxins are in our environment that are causing diseases to grow rapidly? Why have we left the responsibility of our health and safety to a medical profession that has proven with actions they do not intend to provide solutions? This discussion has been needed for a long time. Creating a healthier, cleaner and safer future depends on all humans working together to provide the solutions needed to create an alkaline environment. It really is that simple. Why is our focus on printed paper money instead of providing a simple solution to creating a safer future for all? Science has proven that when hemp is planted in the ground, it cleans as it grows. Could this be a simple solution? Cannabis in non-psychoactive form has been proven through science to promote healthy cell growth and protect the immune system, another simple solution. It is time we have an honest conversation within our communities. United we stand, divided we fall. If we continue to allow an acidic environment to develop, we will lose the air that we breathe. It really is that simple. Look around, our environment is already becoming weak and acidic. The time to pay attention is now. For years, we have trusted our medical professionals with protecting our health and safety. Instead, they have chosen to provide us with temporary solutions to very real problems. They don't pay attention to the many chemicals that have been creating an acidic atmosphere. Pesticides and geo-aerosol engineering, how do these chemicals affect the environment? Please make the right choice and focus on our health and safety. Life itself depends on humans paying attention. The simplicity here is this is true. Our medical professionals do not focus on what is needed within our community to create a healthier, cleaner and safer community. And we need this stuff. Like, we went to Grand Haven yesterday because that's where we live. We want to move to Muskegon, but we wanna know that the Muskegon's focus is on creating a healthier, cleaner, safer future first. We have two daughters and I grew up in Muskegon, I grew up in Wolf Lake and I absolutely loved it. It was a wonderful, loving, compassionate community. But I don't see that anymore, especially in the city. When I come to help, people get angry if we cannot help the same day. They become violent. That's unacceptable. People have to work together in order to achieve the goals that we need to achieve. And the air we breathe, the ground that we plant our crops in, and the water we drink should be our top priority. Thank you, guys.
My name is Dale Anderson. I don't live in the city, I do live in the township. I work for the city or in the city, both actually. But I was on a fishing trip down to Detroit with a friend and he threw up a good point to me. We were talking about the fees to the launch. And I told him I didn't mind the fee going to the launch, that I thought the sixty-five dollars or whatever the fee was, was nice to have a launch available. We got an outhouse and he says, "Well, they pay less for a person that lives within the city." And I says, "Yes, they pay taxes." And he says, "Well, I work in the city, I pay taxes too." And I said, "Well, not a bad point, you know?" So I'm just throwing that out to you. If a person works within the city and they pay taxes, you might consider softening the blow on that launch permit and kind of making them feel like they're part of the community.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dale Wallace and I live out of eighteen fifty-six Wood. I'm sure most of you saw me in the paper when we had the storm. I was throwing out the pine tree on the roof. But I just wanted to say that I think that changes can be made without spending as much money. I don't know anything about the millage. I did get a brief education from you today because I didn't know anything about millages. Been seeing them at the voting booths and I either checked yes or no. Sounds good, doesn't sound good, you know? But at least you kind of broke it down to me. But what I can say is that when I come into a city, I don't care what city it is. I lived in Plant, I grew up in Plant. I moved to Detroit, I moved to Muskegon. I moved to Houston, moved back to Muskegon. But one thing I look at is the streets. When you drive into a city, you see how that city looks. You know if that city is being taken care of. If you see papers and bottles and cigarettes and stuff. And I stay across from Dollar General and I go every spring and every fall, I go behind Dollar General with my own garbage bags, my own rake, my own broom, my own dustpan. And I was talking to, is that all right if I call you Larry here? Okay. I was talking to him yesterday and I was telling him that I, you know, I was wondering if the city had anything where you can go there and get the bags and things, if you're willing to clean. And he said, "Yeah, sure, you know, you can just call this number and they'll bring it right out to you." And I didn't know that. And sometimes you don't know because you don't ask, you know, what's out there. But that's one of the things that I felt that the children here didn't have enough to do. I felt that they were running around, they just don't have enough to do. They're out in the streets, I don't know. Some places they have, like in McLaughlin neighborhood, they always come up with ideas and things for the kids. But I stay at Marshfield and that's what we're trying to work on now, getting things done. They mentioned some of my boys and girls club coming to the area. And I just think it would be good to give the children something to do because in the summer, I don't wanna see all those little faces running across my grass. And I have a problem with that, you know? And me, I'm a renter. And I was listening to him talking about renters and I rent, but people don't know I rent. They think I own because I take care of my yard, I take care of my house on the inside and outside. My landlord told me, "I like having you as a tenant because you take pride in the property," you know? And when people were not living on both sides of me and the houses were vacant, I still raked both sides that were connected to my grass because it was a reflection on me. I'm like, I wanna be in the middle of something and it's looking like I'm in a ghetto. And I got the little boy today and I said, "You love my tree, don't you, you keep hugging it?" And he said, "Yeah, that's my friend." And I said, "Okay, so if you see any dandelion hairs, pop them. You know, if you see any paper on the grass, pick it up, please." You know, he said, "Okay." I said, "You gonna do that for me, I have some cookies for you." And he said, "Okay, Ms. Dale, I'll do that for you." But I'm just saying, we need to, I think, a lot of stuff we can save money on if people just took pride themselves and just picked up something. If you see something, just pick it up. A lot of this stuff is just plain old common sense and that's all.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Sure. It was Dave, right, from McCracken?
Yeah, rebuttal to the warning system. Boy, it only gets the attention from the people who are there. Electronic signs of education gets a lot more attention and they're always getting seen, they're always being taught. That's a lot broader thing, schools, electronic signs, every time you go down there, you see a sign. You go down there and it's not even a bad day and you see a sign. You don't hear the sirens, you don't hear nothing. You see it, it's coming. That's on that. On the landlord thing, I appreciate what she said. I'm a landlord also and had some pretty good tenants, put up flowers, everything, done a great job. I've been great and I live there half of my property. But I've also had, with this gentleman saying, I've had long grass, city coat. They say, "You gotta cut your grass." And I'm looking over across the street at the house where people are with them, probably own it, and it's not even cut. But yeah, I'm looking at it, a cut line and there's a still, just tall. And mine was that tall and the city got on me. And I'm just like, well, what gives? I didn't call up to complain, I just let it go. I didn't really, I said, "Whatever." But that's just a comparison to what I think is what kind of would be the standard.
Yeah. And sometimes things are based on complaints, so we like it to be fair. So the only way it works then is, you know?
To make a call.
Yep, yep, and we appreciate that because we all appreciate it when everyone is doing the same thing, so.
Except when it was my property, I had to be calling.
Well, that's what I was wondering, how I know where y'all live?
And that has happened to me too when I did have a rental. And yes, even the mayor got popped for when we had the no parking during the wintertime. I forgot to take it off, so.
We are moving away from this complaint-based stuff for grass and things like that, so you should see that better starting this year. A lot more fair, a lot more evenly, evenly enforced throughout the city.
Guys, cross the street, please. They get lined up, I'll go back out next to it.
Yeah.
Then four weeks, not even that, there's still sand, many days.
I understand. I did my last fall and twice this spring. Because my yard's clean, we have a little wind and now it's not clean again, so I hear you.
It looks like we have a couple more comments. I just wanna remind people, I think everyone has a survey, right? If you do take off and at the back, we'll take your survey. We definitely wanna get those before you leave. So if you do have to go, please get that to her. Go ahead.
My name is Sandra from Towne, seven twelve seventy-two Morris Avenue. I feel that our roads are in bad shape. And like the young man was saying, he doesn't have money. And I thought maybe, I don't know how you guys could work this, but maybe come up with, say, a flat fee for everyone? Because my home is not an old home and my taxes are gonna go up if we go with the three fifty and plus. And I thought maybe a flat fee and possibly some of the city issues, we could get some volunteers. Like the lady was saying, common sense. But our kids don't have common sense. I was a school teacher. I know that we're in three and four generations of no common sense. And they have to be taught the things that we need them to do. And I agree that if we could get some volunteers to do some of the stuff that we need to be for the city, some of the issues that people can help, put some type of notice in the paper or in examiner or wherever, or put it out on email or whatever, that maybe that can help also. What we do, we need to, we need to step up our game, as I said, we do. And there's things that need to be done. And I know people don't have money, I understand that. Because I'm a widow and I'm retired also, but we need to do something.
Can I? Yeah. If I can recommend, take a look in that, those action plans we handed out. There's a section there on community engagement and empowering the neighborhood associations to help us work together, help identify people that can help in the neighborhoods and at the same time identify people that need help in the neighborhoods and bring them together. And we're hoping over the course of this summer to kind of roll that out with some resources available to those neighborhoods so that we can start seeing more of a sense of community, neighborhood by neighborhood, instead of trying to do it citywide. But I think we're on the same page on that one, absolutely. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Julia Cook and I live on Winchester Drive in Glen Side neighborhood. I just wanted to share a few thoughts. One, as a citizen of Muskegon, a resident, I personally feel that an electronic or noise feel that an electronic or noise or something that requires electrical power, for beach warning system is a waste of money. I think people will die either way. I recognize that. And I think there are those that do watch warning systems, but I think that non, something that isn't going to cost as much money would be just as effective. Okay? If they're gonna pay attention to whether it's safe or not, they're gonna pay attention to a flag. Okay? Um, but, and I love the idea of the stories because that is what gets people's attention. That gets them to think about how that relates to themselves. The community engagement, the neighborhood associations are a great idea. Um, and I really encourage people to get involved in them. As a community member, I try to be involved in areas that I can personally impact. And I think if we all take a little piece of our community and work on that, then we can have that impact. The other thing that I want to say is, is I don't live paycheck to paycheck, but I live pretty darn close to paycheck to paycheck. I took about a thirty percent decrease in salary, okay, uh, and came to Muskegon. I love it here. I love being here. That said, our roads are horrible. And frankly, I, I support a road village dedicated specifically to fixing roads. I encourage you to pursue that. And I just think, as I look at the community, that's what I hear of from other people, that, and, and the public safety. So I wanted to let you know that I support that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yes, one comment from Commissioner Hood.
I'd just like to make another comment on the, um, I don't know what would work for us, the warning system. All I know is that a life, there's no value put on human life. If we could save one, two people, I think it's worth a try. And so that, that was my, my, my point is just whatever it is, it's gonna work. We, we, we deserve. Whatever it is that's gonna work, I think, um, we need to try. That's all.
Lowell Kirksey, thirteen twenty-nine Fourth Street. Um, a couple of things that have concerned me over the last couple of months, particularly with the number of deaths that have occurred. Um, many of you know me. I was previously the Recreation Marina Supervisor before the layoffs. Um, when you have spent so many years around children, you see them grow into young ladies and young men, only to hear that they've died tragically, it hits you home, it hits home very deeply. And one of the concerns that I have is that throughout Muskegon County, over the last five years, the recreation programs in the city of Muskegon Heights, the recreation program in the city of Norton Shores, and the recreation program at City of Muskegon were either revamped, downsized, or eliminated. And my experience is that if you don't get your hands and people involved in the lives of these children early, things of what we're dealing with now occur more frequently. The small amount of money that you spend on recreation activities for these children and the type of individuals you put around them, impact their lives greatly. And you can deter what we're dealing with on what seems to be an increased basis. One of the things that I would suggest is that you look into spearheading a rec authority. And you can go to Michigan Parks and Recreation. This could be a countywide village in which you set up one particular body to administer recreation programs throughout the county. Northwest Ottawa County has a rec authority. The person there, the director is Jill Van der Stoe. She would be a person to talk to about this. And I think we need to bring back a strong recreation program in the area, not only for the quality of life for our families, but someone who's a professional looking at our needs. Moving to the Smith Rierson or the Farmers Market, in nineteen sixty-eight, there was, this building was established as a high school. I was a part of, um, working with the city on that. And it was a long time, passion and honor. I don't know, Mr. Pearson, I have never met you, but, um, before I left, the previous manager had what was called the Smith Rierson Project. Uh, he took it out of our office and he took it into his office. I don't know if Kathy Brubaker Clark has that plan. But that plan included using that green space, establishing a building which you now have downtown to do the same things. Also, green acres, which is located across the creek. We used to call it the stank creek because of the smell that emanated out of the creek that ran along it. But that area was to be, um, a pavilion and for music. Also, if you move closer to Wood Street over here, that area was, it ends into Walton Avenue and to Wood here, would have been winter recreational activities with sliding heels. Then you come over to this area, the plan had in it trails that were lighted with bump outs going along, uh, to, um, Getty Street and also with plans to do development along, um, to Still. Now, green space adds to the property values. If you look at this side of the city, we don't have the same park development as the west side of the city. That became an issue. Parks got developed, but somehow the east side of the city was lacking. This would be a great area instead of, uh, competing with Heritage Landing all the time, to have our own big park with access. You can put a road back in the highway there. And people could have easy on access instead of having to go through the Jackson neighborhood or coming down from, um, uh, Spring Street. But I would hope that you, if you need us to give you ideas or revisit that plan, uh, look at through the DNR as to monies that could be used to, as matching funds to help develop this project. We're now having a surge of new development in the Jackson Hill area and along, uh, if you look over by the Farmers Market. It would be great for this side of the city to have a park of the nature where people can come out, walk along the creek, walk along, uh, the marshes there with bump outs, see what nature has to offer. So I hope that we start to look deeply at redeveloping and reigniting our recreation programs. The Y is doing a great job, but they're not our municipalities. You look at Ottawa County, they're strongly involved with their municipalities in developing and creating recreation programs. We don't need private entities doing this. We need our governments doing this. And I would hope that if we partnered with other cities as a village, countywide, that we could take and start reopening these buildings and providing recreation programs. Not a Boys and Girls Club, that's a great thing too. But that needs to be something that families, citizens get involved with. And we start reinvesting in our children and reinvesting in the quality of life for our families. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
We got a comment there. Um, thank you, Mr. Kirksey. Um, I actually grew up in this side of town, in this neighborhood, and came to the same very place here every day after school when they had community activities. Uh, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Roland Jones, uh, spirited off, uh, the activities here in this community. And it was good because we learned, uh, life values, um, different skills. And everyone was very respectful. Parents had, um, good communications, um, with, you know, people in the community. And we lived together as a community. And I look across the street where, um, as Kirksey talked about that area over there, um, off the side of Wood, and that property has been like that since I was a kid, that I can remember. And we had conversation on that also. So part of the goal setting session, I, um, was pretty adamant about getting some type of development in that area over there, to green that area out, to redevelop that property, to, uh, add some value to it, sow the property value to go up and do some housing. I strongly believe that that would add great value to the city. But, you know, we're here talking about a, a village and we do want our city to be the best, uh, that it can be, just like the, um, city manager, um, stated. And we have to start somewhere. But I think it's long overdue that, you know, you see this type of, uh, light, this type of, uh, property that has no, had no attention to it for years. And I, I think it'll be a little bit easier, I would think that it would have been a little bit easier if we had saw some development occurring, not just to this point, you know? And I just want, you know, the citizens to give as much input and what you want to see. And because you're gonna be the ones, you know, footing the bill on this, just as plain and simple. And like Mrs. Boom said, you know, a lot of the kids here don't have common sense because, you know, the, the value and respect, you know, we as citizens and, and leaders and parents, we got to pour back into our, uh, children. And it starts with us. And if we don't do that, and just like we have to pour into the city and make a, a, a lifestyle for them, um, we, we have to do the same thing. So, and I just wanted to share that. And I appreciate all your input and your comments. And anytime that you wanna, um, you know, address me, I'm, I'm available. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I get pretty passionate about this community. So, you know?
Got a new address, uh, Randall Dane, four eleven Glen Oaks Drive, off of Marquette. So I really don't really know what I'm gonna say. I'm just gonna kind of let it flow. If that's okay. First, I want to thank everybody for sitting on the committee. Cause maybe a lot of people don't realize all what you have to go through and the decisions that you have to make, you know, and the hard decisions that you have to make, I guess. And even myself, uh, sitting back and watching, by not coming to these meetings and not coming to these kind of, uh, you know, forums, I can misjudge it by what I hear and by things getting stamped and things happening and changing and all the, and with you bringing that, the factual evidence on the, the income thing is just one of the areas that I, I think that a lot of people do, do not even know when it comes down to the money issue. I mean, we hear the money issue, but everybody's like, yeah, 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 you're probably hiring too many employees or something. And this is what people say. And, and I think I might have even said it, you know? But as far as that goes, I just want to say thank you. Cause I, to me, I believe that the city of Muskegon is trying hard and, and I think they're really trying to, and they're doing the right thing with the money. And, and I'm not that factual about knowing everything that's going on because I don't. I'm, I'm just a concerned citizen. So I'm here to express a few concerns here today. Um, kind of was led to do this because there's been a lot of violence in the community. And, um, it seems like every time we hire more officers and more protection, it seems like it just seems like it doesn't, it gets worse. And I don't know if that's just my outside looking in. I don't have any facts on it today. But, uh, it seems like it doesn't ever seem to fix the problem per se, kind of like the beach incident. You know, we could put all the money into trying to warn the people about not going into the water at certain areas or times of the day and people will still do it. I was riding up Wood Street on my way here. And I almost had to call nine one one because, not because I was feeling attacked or anything like that. I'm, I'm okay. I seen a crowd of kids out there and they were getting ready to fight again, you know? And I seen other people on their phone. So I kind of assumed that they called nine one one. I didn't see any fights take place or anything like that, or I would have called nine one one. But I seen them yelling in each other's face and getting ready to argue. And, and, and we already know all the gunplay that's going on in this city. And, uh, it, it seems as though that there's nothing for the kids to do anymore. I don't know why that is. I'm just gonna go back to work. When I was a kid, it seemed like there was always a playground to go on and there was lunches. I don't know what kind of food it was. It probably was, you know, it was good then, but I don't think I would eat it today. But, you know, but it was good as a kid, you know? And there was things that they did with the kids and they put them, you know, there was programs that they would take with the Michigan Adventure and different things like that for the, for the little kids. And there was always basketball. There was always baseball. And we all got together and we played hardball, you know? And we used, we used all the facilities out here that were available, you know? And of course, technology hasn't helped us any because now you can do that on your couch and, uh, and stuff like that. So that's a big major, major problem. But, um.
It's been three minutes.
Oh, okay. I, I, okay, I gotta wrap it up. Okay. I'm, I'm new at this. I'm a long-winded. I guess I'll end it with this. I'm just concerned about our community and I would like to invite, there's, I'm not a complete part, uh, part of, I'm a part of this community. On Saint Joseph in the Mason area, there's gonna be a picnic this weekend. Okay? And it's, uh, there's gonna be a rally from Getty Street, the Philadelphia Church, all the way down through to Wood Street to the Mason area on the twenty-fourth. And on the thirty-first, we're gonna do from Holy Trinity and hit all the Heights area and go through all the neighborhoods and try to talk to some of the children about the gun violence. Okay? And, and we're gonna just take a, a stand on faith. And we're, you know, we're asking for some help too, from the leaders. And, uh, I'm hoping that somebody has contacted the police department too, but we want to be safe. So that's about all I got. I kind of did want, that's one, I wanted some of the other members to come down and, and invite themselves and invite you guys out to that. And to let you know that we, our hearts are in the right place. We don't know if it's gonna make a difference, but we want to go try to touch one child and we don't want to just stop here. There's more things that we want to do in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have no doubt that if it's done with true sincerity and love, that you're gonna make a lot of difference. Um, I, I, I will say that, you know, unfortunately, we, we have seen an unacceptable, you know, level of violence within Muskegon and our sister communities. Fortunately, within the past year, the city of Muskegon, across the board, um, even given the unfortunate, um, events of last summer down in Ottawa and the like, have seen a twenty-one percent, uh, drop in crime. Our police agency is heavily involved in the Social Justice Committee, which involves other police agencies, prosecuting attorney's office and, uh, local churches. Last year, um, with our city planning department and grants that come out, uh, from there, we've been able to leverage, um, a lot of aid through our partnerships with twelve to fourteen different agencies. Last year, we were able to service eight thousand children, uh, and young adults in summer programming. We also partnered with Muskegon Public Schools this winter for both, uh, male and female, uh, rec programming, uh, in the evenings so that we could, you know, keep a connection, you know, even during the winter months because we do focus on, on the summer months. Um, but even our, um, collaboration during the school year, uh, with truancy programming with the different school districts, um, we've seen a dramatic, uh, drop in chronic, uh, truancy. So we're putting forth the effort. But of course, we need to all join together, uh, to keep that momentum. It, it does have to come out from, you know, as you said, each and every household. Cause, you know, quality of life may be an interesting concept, but I don't know if it's necessarily something that can be, you know, delivered ultimately through a program. The quality of life begins, you know, right here in our hearts and, and how we deal with each other, uh, as, as neighbors. But thank you very much for your comments and, uh, continued good luck with your, your, your great efforts. I have no doubt that you, you, you will make a difference, uh, just given your sincerity and, and the, and the love that you hold for your neighbor and your community. Thank you. Go ahead.
How you guys doing today?
Good. Thank you.
I'm not from here. I'm a southern boy. I grew up on the ocean. And hearing you guys talk about your beach warning system, um, a lot of places down south, I mean, when you drown, it's because you get tired or you get caught in a rip current. If you've ever been caught in a rip current, you can't swim out of it, but you can swim with it.
No, that's right.
Down south, on the beaches, down the Carolinas, through the Gulf, every place that they've got rip currents or undertows occur quite a bit, they have a buoy system. I mean, you'd have to figure out the spacing because I don't know. But it's basically a permanent flotation device anchored to the ocean floor right. a permanent flotation device anchored to the ocean floor, right there. And what it does, is if you get caught, or you get tired, you have the ability to help yourself, to give someone time to get to you, as opposed to someone coming straight out from the beach that may not notice that you're in distress. You have something that you can actually swim to, to grab onto, to give yourself a chance, and to give someone else a chance to help you. It works down south, you might, you might want to look into it, I wouldn't have any idea of the cost, but it's effective. So, I just thought I'd bring that to you guys' attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Billy Joy Holmes, and I'm the president of Jackson Hill Neighborhood Association, and I saw a lot of people, I wanted to get up earlier and say, and, this is our meeting night, we meet the third, um, Tuesday of every month, six o'clock, right down here. And, um, anybody up in my area, which is Jackson Hill, which you drove through, I can, I can use my street pay too. I only have three houses in my block, but the, the whole Jackson can be, um, paid. And, uh, I appreciate everybody that came, and, um, we did, we do have our park fixed up, and, um, I still think it should be things that we need to do for our children in this community. And I want to see the boarded up schools gone, and, um, make that space for activities for children to do. It worked back when Mr. German and Mr. Hood was coming up, and, um, I kept them in line. I'm proud to see those young men, you know?
I want to hear these Willie and Eric stories.
And, they always had something to do, it was, um, football, um, baseball, and we were up in the Nelson air, ne- area, we used the schools quite a bit, and, um, I think that neighborhood schools should be utilized in that area, so that the kids can know that education is important, but after school, they have, they have an outlet, something that they can do. We even had swimming, you know, so, um, we need to get back to that, um, so that kids will have common sense and grow up to be millionaires. Yeah. But, uh, you know, and so I think that, um, everybody that came out, I, I welcome you to, um, come to, uh, our meetings, and, um, and if you live in the Jackson area, um, feel free to come, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work with the Neighborhood Association. All right. I think this has been a great, um, meeting, this is kind of what we were hoping for when we thought we would take the show on the road, and, uh, you know, we usually have more formal meetings at City Hall, and this was a chance to give more time for public comment, and I'm glad people came and made comments, 'cause that's what we're looking for. We are looking, as we move ahead with our plan, and with the issues that are facing us, that a lot of you commented on, we take them, uh, the comments sincerely, and, um, I know we took notes, and we'll get back to people, and we'll continue to get input. Again, I wanted to remind people about the surveys, if you could get a chance, to quick fill those out in the last couple of minutes here, we'd appreciate that. We want to thank the, uh, Mark, uh, the Jackson Hill Neighborhood Association for letting us intrude on their meeting today. It was a great start, to have some people who might be thinking to be here, so that helped, and this is a great space, and we even got to, uh, you know, here are, are youth activities, uh, underway, there's a, there's a boxing program going on right behind us. So, uh, I don't know if there's any other comments? Uh, we, we have, um, specifically set June the third, it's another Tuesday night, um, at five-thirty at McGrath Park, we will have another, uh, forum such as this, so, if you want to come back and give more comment, and bring your friends, bring your neighbors, so that we can continue the conversation, uh, feel free, uh, but we will be, um, reconvening and carrying on the conversation Tuesday, June third, uh, beginning at five-thirty McGrath Park, and are we gonna have weenies and ice cream again? Oh, yes! All right, I think that, that we are, uh, then adjourned.